All right, I know we still have one board member that is going to connect with us, but let's get started. And welcome to the Eden Central School District Public Forum for the Capital Improvement Project 2022. Today's November 18th, 2020. So I thank you for joining us either in person or virtually today. I do want to start off by saying it may seem a little unusual that we're talking about Capital Project 2022 right now, when today we learned that Eden has now moved into one of the Orange microclusters and we'll be dealing with all the things that go on with that. But it's important to think about a capital project not in terms of today, but in terms of tomorrow. Capital projects take an awful long time to plan, and that's why this one is titled 2022. As you'll hear later in the presentation, that's actually when construction would start. So in order to have a really good project, planning takes a long period of time. You're going to hear in a little bit that's actually, this project's been the years in the making, and I look forward to sharing some of the details of the project with you today. Let's see here. If I could advance my slide, there we go. So we have a number of partners with us today. To my left on the stage is Mike McCarthy. He's a member of Young &amp; Right Architects. Shawn Wright, partner in that firm, is with us virtually. And we have Nick Humphrey from Campus Construction with us, and a couple of his members are with us virtually as well. We thank both of those entities for their partnership with the district. They've been exceptionally professional and hardworking in helping us get to where we are today. So the Capital Improvement Project, move my screen here, just bear with me. We're going to talk about the project development. We're going to talk about the scope of the project and the budget. We have some images for you and some proposed images for you, as well as a schedule. So again, here's some of the folks that I mentioned. Shawn Wright, Partner in Charge, Young &amp; Right. Mike McCarthy, Project Architect, Young &amp; Right. Nick Humphrey from Campus. And Jessica Bianchi from Municipal Advisors. Does the outstanding work of making sure the district is in an outstanding financial position. So thank you all for your work thus far. Again, Capital Project, Improvement Project 2022 is what we're here to talk about today. And as I said a moment ago, this project has been in the making for quite a long period of time. In fact, the roots of what we talk about today started back in 2014. In 2014, the Eden Central School District had a large group of stakeholders come together to talk about the needs and the infrastructure of the district. That was really important work at that time, and it was done in a fashion that we were still bearing the fruits of the labor that happened back then. Because back in 2014, it had been quite a few years since the district had undergone any type of significant project or renovation. 2015 led to the previously completed project, that's when it was developed. In 2018, they completed the Capital Improvement Project 2020. Fast forward to 2019, revisited the previous comprehensive list for items that didn't fit in the last project. So whenever you do a project, and you could even think about this in terms of your own home improvements, you typically have a laundry list of those things that you must do. Think infrastructure, like a roof, those things you want to do, maybe renovating a kitchen, and those things that, boy, that would be really neat if we could do that. Maybe adding like a morning room to your house, which would just be a bonus. And when you plan a project, whether it's at home or it's in school, you always start with those things that we have to do. You have to stop the roof from leaking before you put new stuff inside. And when you do that, you can only fit so many things under a particular budget. So we are in a really great situation because with our partnership with Young &amp; Right and Campus, we've been able to plan long-term and really pick away at those things that needed to happen in this district over a period of time. Added in a few things that should happen. But in school district, you don't get to too, you don't really get to too many wants because that's not really how school districts are designed. And by wants, I mean those extra things like that sunroom I talked about before. So 2019 took a look at the building condition survey and some of those other items that weren't able to be included previously. In October of 2019, again, meetings with the community and students and staff to really start to narrow down the scope of the next project. Okay. I might add to, anyone who is watching at home, if you have questions throughout the way, feel free to email them to either Barb Tommasulo or me at District Office. And there'll be a link at the end of this presentation for an email address. Of course, you can always find our email addresses on our district website as well. So Project, or Capital Project 2022 is split into two propositions, and they are two distinct propositions. Proposition number one looks to do some work in Eden Elementary, primarily windows and masonry, remodeling of the music room, and a renovation of some classroom space. We also have some sidewalks that need replacement and a parking lot that is really nearing the end of its useful life. At the middle school, high school, the odd soundboards and lighting and all of that infrastructure is slated under Proposition One. Also, a really incredibly important component of this project is to move the high school, middle school building off of the Cogen plant and put it on the electrical grid. Now, folks at home, your house is more likely than not on the grid. You have typically clean and consistent power. Our district transitioned the elementary and the GLP a number of years ago from the Cogen plant to the grid, and that's necessary because the Cogen plant is really getting to the end of its useful life. And we'll talk about that more in a few minutes. The high school, middle school cafeteria has a rather large and outdated air handling unit. We've learned so much about the importance of air handling over the last several months and how important it is to efficiently turn over the air in space, you know, so many times per hour, and it's time to address that space as well. In addition, the nurses' office that serves over 700 students in our high school, middle school, is incredibly outdated. It is essentially a series of rooms, you know, adjacent to one another. There is no flow. It is very difficult to check students in or really have any good sightlines in there, and we'll talk about that in length in a little bit. Our bus garage roof is out of warranty and is leaking, and as I said before, you've got to stop the leaks before you can put any new stuff inside. So it's time to take a look at that. Once, you know, if and when we're able to move away from the Cogen plant, we look at that as some found space for the district, and we return that into a much-needed storage area. So that's Proposition Number One. Proposition Number Two looks again at the elementary building, library lighting, some main office renovations, some improved lighting on the exterior of the building, and then resurfacing the tennis courts at the elementary. GLP would get new exterior lighting and some door and HVAC work on the inside. The high school would be remodeling of the library to make it a true library media center, which is a very exciting opportunity. Again, exterior lighting, because Proposition Two, if you look at that, is really about a lot of number of safety upgrades. And I would include in a safety upgrade, the tennis court relocation and converting the old location into a parking lot. And we get to some photos later on, you'll understand what I mean, why I say that current tennis court is not safe. And of course, if we're going to do lighting at the other buildings, it makes sense to make sure our bus garage is well-lit as well. So focusing on Eden Elementary, and this is all in Proposition Number One. What you see here is the exterior of the elementary. You can see that from Main Street as you drive by. Okay? I'm going to go back for a second because I want you to focus on the windows because it's a big component of this project. And when you look at the windows, you'll notice that they're white. They look like windows, of course. You'll also notice a lot of white, what's called leaching underneath those windows. The issue there is these windows are old. They were put in in the 80s. The company that actually installed those windows went out of business shortly after. Many of the windows are non-functioning, meaning they can't open. We can go back to the importance of airflow and having windows that open and that are secure. They also are not energy efficient, so they are more than overdue for a replacement. And along with that replacement would be possibly some repainting and certainly cleaning up the exterior of that brick to get rid of that white leaching. So this is, I don't know if it's a historic building in, you know, every sense of the term, but certainly historic to Eden, and therefore it is really important to make sure that we maintain that historic perspective. So we have a schematic here of what the building could look like. And you'll notice the colors changed a little bit. Window design is a little bit different. Would actually have two panels that would open and would really do a nice job of improving airflow in classrooms. And it's important to note that Young &amp; Right Architects and Campus worked with the State Historic Prevention Office to make sure that this new facade, this new proposed facade, really meets the historical perspective of the building. And they went so far as to really find some old photographs of this building, certainly pre-1980s, probably much earlier than that, to make sure the proposed windows meet that historic perspective that we want to maintain. This is the backside of the building, and again, another rendition of what that would look like. Moving into the interior of the elementary building, this is the existing music suite. It's hard to see in these photographs, but there's not only carpeting on the floor, but there's carpeting on the walls. This is no longer the standard for any music room, of course. It certainly presents a cleaning issue. These types of rooms would get new layouts and new finishes. It would be an updated space that's much more suitable for our students and the learning that goes on in there. In the exterior, again, a number of years ago, there was some significant sidewalk replacement in the district, and it's time to continue that work. In addition to the sidewalks, the parking lot, as I mentioned earlier, would be replaced. That would include improved drainage and catch basins to make sure that the water's flowing in the correct manner so that we can keep that parking lot as dry as possible. Moving over to the middle school, high school, again, we are still in Proposition Number One. As I mentioned before, the auditorium at the high school, middle school would receive new lighting and updated sound, which is really important again, that those items were last installed about 20, 25 years ago, and they are certainly outdated. I really look forward to the day when we can welcome our community back for those outstanding high school and middle school plays and musicals and concerts, and our students and our staff really, really deserve the opportunity to have some updated equipment there. This is our nurses' office, and if you're thinking, oh my gosh, that doesn't look anything like a nurses' office, you're absolutely right. As I said before, based on the space available to us at the middle school, high school, we are utilizing the space at hand and making do, of course, but we can do better than that. So this whole area would need to be renovated, new finishes, new layouts, and you'll see some suggestions, some possibilities later in the presentation, and really making it what is expected of any type of healthcare facility, even one in a school. And again, so asking you to receive, here's some examples of what an updated nurses' office could look like. These are examples from schools that our partners have worked with. You can see there's added privacy for anyone who's using those cots. There's also sightlines from where the nursing station would be, and it's just a much better space to work with our students who aren't feeling their best. Okay, so we'll move on to the Cogen plant. And the Cogen plant is a building that sits out back at the middle school, high school, and it provides power to the district. It runs off of gas that we pay for, and it provided power, and it did a really great job for a number of years. But it is beyond its useful life. If you've paid close attention to board meetings, you know that we agreed maybe a month ago, maybe two months ago, to put a significant amount of money into the plant in order to keep it running. And we have to do that because if the project is approved, the earliest we'll be able to move off of the grid is perhaps sometime in 2022. So we have to keep the plant running. We have to invest in it, but it doesn't make sense to invest, you know, long-term dollars for short-term gain. So along with moving the middle school, high school onto the grid, again, like every other building in the district, we would upgrade the generator and then we would utilize this building for different purposes. Over the bus garage, one of the, you know, least exciting parts of any project is fixing a roof. If you've ever put a roof on your house, it doesn't feel good, but it feels really great not to have water leaking on your head. The roof on this building is out of warranty now, and so you know typically a roof warranty in a school project can last anywhere from 20 to 30 years. So that gives you an estimate of how old this roof actually is. You can see the water pooling on the roof, so that is certainly slated for this project. So back to Eden Elementary and Capital Project 2022. This is actually moving us on to Proposition Number Two. The photos you see here are of the main office in the elementary building. In my estimation, this is original space, original to when the building was open. You can see the parquet-like floors and some of the finishes. You can see that there's kind of a slide window there to greet any of our parents. So this room would be renovated to be much more functional, obviously new finishes and updated space and enhanced security as well. As I mentioned earlier, we are looking at the elementary tennis court and really looking at what can we do with that space to make it more usable for our students and for our community. We certainly know that pickleball is a very popular game all over West New York, all over the country, and we have an opportunity here to put a new surface on this space and really examine whether we can utilize that, not only for our students, but for our community and for pickleball or any of the other outdoor activities that we can utilize that space All right, back to the middle school, high school. Again, this is Proposition Two, and I'm going to keep repeating Proposition One versus Two, and that will become even more important as we get towards the end of our presentation. What you're looking at here now is a very traditional library setting, and by traditional, I mean old. This is the original library where, you know, the instruction that went on in that space, it was appropriate at that time, but it is time to really take a hard look at renovating this space. When you see some photographs in a second of updated school libraries, they have a much more coffeehouse feel. And think about our adolescents now, and if you've ever seen them, you know, congregate in a coffeehouse, whether they're doing their homework or they're simply, you know, congregating and discussing and whatnot, they want a comfortable space where they can relax and work together. And we have a great opportunity with the structure of this library to do some pretty neat things and stay within the footprint of the building. What you see here are two renovated library media centers. So it's not a library anymore, it's a library media center, and that media piece comes to the improvements in technology that are needed in today's LMCs and today's library media centers. On the right-hand side, you can see almost like a, it looks like a bonfire in the middle there, a fire pit and, you know, comfortable seating and tables around it, obviously surrounded by books. We're still going to have books in libraries. And on the left-hand side, if you notice, there's some indented cubbies there, similar to what we have already built in place in our library, and we could really utilize that place for those comfortable spaces for our students to learn and work. So this is the existing tennis court, and you may recall a second ago, I talked about it being a safety issue. And the picture on my left, perhaps it's on your left, perhaps it's on your right, is that it shows the length of the crack. It goes across, I think, three or four of the courts, making them virtually inoperable, certainly during tennis matches. And then the other photograph with a pen for scale shows part of the crack and actually the width of the crack. And I have to say, I personally walked this tennis court. I'm not the biggest person in the world, but my entire foot fits into that crack. What I learned when I got here is that the district had attempted to fix the cracking in the tennis courts at least three or four times, tried many different products, and ultimately, it's been determined that we've got a drainage issue underneath. And we can keep putting product on that tennis court, and we'll continue to crack. So the plan and the Proposition Two is to remove the tennis court, improve the drainage, add some additional parking, and then actually move the tennis court, I believe, Mike, you said it was, to the west, right? And what I noticed today when we looked over that place is that that westerly location actually will offer a little bit of a windbreak perhaps for a couple of those courts, which is probably a benefit that people didn't realize when they saw it. So here's an overhead schematic of our current tennis court and our parking lot. Of course, our building is off to the left. We've got the main athletic entrance for our gymnasium to the left and to the right, or at least my right, is the track and the field. So we know both of those areas often experience a high volume of traffic. And this is a schematic for what it could look like. You'll notice that the tennis courts have now shifted again to the west and a bit of an alcove or an L of the building there. And the bonus is we can add some parking spaces, and up to 50 or it looks like 54 parking spaces could be added there. In the few times I've been able to attend, you know, truly popular functions here, and I can think back to a soccer game and a basketball game that I attended here before I ever even worked here, it was awful hard to find parking in that area. And I'm sure we're all looking forward to the days when our parking lots are filled and our community is enjoying the various events that we offer here. So adding those parking spaces in that area, I think, is a real bonus, and sliding those tennis courts over should, and fixing the drainage should and will fix the cracking problem and give our students and our community courts that actually can be utilized. Okay, so projects cost money, and we know that, okay? And remember, it's Proposition One and Proposition Two, they are two different propositions. Proposition Number One comes in at a price of $12,596,132. In order to pay for that, the board has decided to use $3.3 million of capital reserve money. Now, capital reserve money is money that has been saved and set aside for a very specific purpose, in this case, for a capital project, okay? That money cannot be used for anything else other than a capital project at this point, okay? This is what's considered a tax-neutral project, meaning there is no additional tax impact to our taxpayers for Proposition Number One, okay? Proposition Number Two would be an additional $3,283,999. 3.2 million, we'll call it that, okay? That does not use any money in capital reserve, and it would have a tax increase of about $13 per $100,000 home. Now, the important question here is, well, how long will I be paying that $13? That has a 15-year impact. So over 15 years, an extra $13 a year to get all of that work done in Proposition Number Two. But let's back up, because that sounds like an awful lot of money for a district to spend, but it's really not all coming just from our district. If you look at the pie chart where it says financial information, school districts get state-building aid. That means we get aid from the state for projects, and each district has a different rate. In Eden, we get 78.2% of whatever we spend back from the state. That means for every dollar we spend, we get 78.2 cents back. If you extrapolate that out to 12.5, 12.6 million, you're able to figure out how much the state will actually be providing the district for that project. Now, when I talk like this, sometimes I hear back from people and they say, well, that's tax money anyway, and so why should we spend it? Well, it's tax money that's there, and there is a pool of money that's available to schools. It doesn't mean that the next time your New York state tax goes up, it's because Eden had a project. That's very far from the truth. It means that there's a pool of money that's available to us, and quite frankly, if we don't utilize it, other districts will. So our local share is 21.8%, okay? That seems to make sense, 78.2% for the state, 21.8% local. And that 21.8% for Proposition Number One, part of that will be taken care of with that $3.3 million from capital reserve. So again, let's go back to that estimated property tax impact. Assessed home value, $100,000. Impact of Proposition Number One, $0, no impact. The capital reserve fund will be used to offset the local share. Again, Proposition Number Two, $13 over 15 years. That $13 will not kick in until 2023. Very important point to pay attention to. Often when you do a project like this, members of the community have certain interests that they want to see happen, and maybe they like this part of the project or that part of the project. Well, Proposition Two cannot pass without Proposition One passing. So on your ballot, you'll see two propositions. If Proposition One doesn't pass, there's no project, okay? If Proposition One passes, then Proposition Two has an opportunity to pass. So voters will have an opportunity to vote on both components of the project. Okay, so let's talk about our schedule. Pre-refereendum, we started work on this, or the folks started work on this long before I got here in October 2019, with the plan for completion of the pre-refereendum work, which is really the work of our partners, and a vote in December 2020. That vote is scheduled for December 15th. I'll talk more about that in a second. If we have a positive outcome to that vote, either Proposition One or Proposition One and Two, we move on to the design and review phase. That would start as early as January 2021. The reviews tend to take a long time, so that's why we've got an estimated completion date of 2021 for review. We then go out to bid, and obviously, as a school district, we have to go out to bid for components of the project. That would start sometime in January 2022, and takes about a month to complete. So you're looking at a February 2022 date of finalizing bids and awards. Once you get done with bids and awards, then it's time to get to work, and that's when things really get exciting. And the estimate is that construction could start as early as February 2022, hence the title, Capital Improvement Project 2022. Projects typically take a year and a half to two years, and that's because in Western New York, our construction season, particularly when you're doing a lot of site work, and site work really means anything outside, we have a very short window. We have a short window to do parking lots and move tennis courts and create parking lots and so on and so forth. So that's why you look at scheduling things over multiple years. Okay, so public information, as I said earlier, if you have questions or comments, you're welcome to reach out to our district clerk at B. Tommasulo at edencsd.org, where you can call us at 992-3629. This is our first of two public meetings, okay? Today's November 18th. We will be sending out a flyer on Friday, November 20th that details much of what I've talked about, and that should be in your mailbox either over the weekend or early next week. And our next public meeting will be December 9th at 6:00 p.m., a very similar format based on all that we know today. I'm hopeful that we will be able to be in the auditorium. Obviously, as things change with being in an Orange cluster and whatnot, we will need to make some decisions on that public meeting. The referendum vote right now is scheduled for December 15th, 2020. As of this moment, it is planned for in-person voting. I will be working over I will be working over the next several days and weeks to determine whether we can have the in-person voting or whether it will be via absentee ballot. Absentee ballots obviously are always available through request. Again, reach out to the district clerk if you're interested in an absentee ballot. Okay. This is Thomasulo, do we receive any comments or questions through the day?
I did not.
Okay. Ms. Karstadt, any, any questions come in your way during the presentation? Okay. Do any board members have any questions or comments at this time?
Jeff, did you say that thirteen dollars would be per year, not per month, right?
Per year, if I, if I said, if I said per month, boy, do I apologize, that was a big mistake.
You didn't, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
No, you, that would not be the first mistake I made today, Cheryl, but thank you. So thirteen dollars per year, yeah, so thank you for that. Any other questions from the board?
I, I would just like to point out that although the timing of this seems strange because of COVID, et cetera, this has been in the works for six years and another two years before it's even going to begin. And so it's important to, despite COVID and despite the uncertainty, you know, that'll be in the rearview mirror sooner than later. And it's important to continue with things that are much needed repairs around the district.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Cuddy, and, and you're absolutely correct that, you know, we, the planning has been, been in the works for years. And it really makes good sense regardless of what we're dealing with in terms of, of the health issues of our country and, and our world, really, is to continue planning for our students moving forward. So thanks for making that point.
Jeff, I'd like to make a point just in regards to capital reserves. So over time, we've been questioned in regards to why we have, you know, a certain dollar amount in, in reserves. And, and this is the reason why is, is we're not just planning for each school year, year after year. We're, we're planning for 2024, 2025. You know, we plan to have a school district here, you know, well into, into the thirties. So in doing that, that's, that's what that capital reserve money is, is, is for. And, you know, to Jack's point, you know, we started planning this thing back in, in 2014. And we're talking to completion of this in, in 2024. You know, that's where dollars are going. And, you know, not only are we looking annually at the annual school budget, we're looking, you know, many years out into the, into the future for the, the Eden community.
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, obviously being new to the district and, and I did an awful lot of research on, on things here. You know, to see what I was hopefully getting myself into. And I'm pleasantly, I'm, I'm very happy with, with all that I found. Your long-term planning is outstanding and, and that's a credit to this board. And it's also a credit to your partners. And, you know, Young and Wright and Campus have done a great job of, of offering, as well as our, our financial advisors of, of offering great advice on not only scope of projects, but, you know, really helping, helping design some things as well. So special thank you to all, to all you folks, much appreciated.
Jeff, one other thing, maybe Nick and, and Mike could speak to this and just talk about what they've just finished up with the building condition survey, which is going to actually help plan out our, our future capital projects beyond this one. I don't know, Mike or Nick, I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit. I know you guys just completed that here over the last couple of weeks. So maybe you can just give a little insight on to what we're, you know, even though we're, to Jack's point, we're kind of going out in an odd and strange time for this capital project. But, you know, we're, we're even looking at this project and beyond with what just was completed, right, Mike?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so part of what Young and Wright and the team has been working on is a building condition survey for the district. So that, what that is, is it's required by the state that every five years, every school district needs to have an architect come in and evaluate their buildings. So they want to make sure that they're being kept up to date, things are being repaired and money is being spent properly. So about, I think it was about a month ago, we completed our condition survey and we're now compiling the information. And Mr. Sortisio and his team just opened up the state portal for us. So we're going to be inputting all that information back to the state. And along with that, we will hand over a deliverable to you where it's kind of, it's a living document that your team here will work with. So if they want to see, you know, take a look at the roof, you're able to search roofs in the district. You go to the high school, middle school, take a look, okay, that was replaced in 2010. It's got this much warranty left, it's this type of roof. And we do that with really all the components of the building. And it really gets into the nuts and bolts of the building that allows us to keep, keep a good track of what's happening as well as take all that information, put costs to it and put it in the ten-year plan. So we know in 2030, 2030, we need to start looking at a roof that needs to be replaced. And we can budget for those numbers now. So it keeps things running and keeps things up and working properly.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions or comments?
I also, I also think it's I think it's important like with, I know everyone's unsure about economic times right now and it's unstable, it's up, it's down, it's all around. But I think with both propositions, I'd like to look at it as you're getting a lot of bang for your buck. And prop one is zero tax impact and prop two is really only a dollar and eight cents a month impact. And not starting until 2023. So I just think, and this is stuff that you'll be able to actually see visible, sometimes updates you can't see from a passerby's point of view or anything like that. I think these little things that'll really draw a lot of positive attention just from driving by for the school district.
That's a good point. And I think, you know, the windows in that elementary building are, will be so visible. And as I mentioned, those went in the eighties. And that was a long time ago, I remember the eighties, it was a long time ago, right? So we, we put new windows in and, and they, they should be here for a good twenty, thirty years. And, and the same with the roof and, and some of the other, other components as well. Okay. Well, if there are no more questions or comments, this will be the end of, of our public forum. We will have another, another public forum on December ninth, is that correct, December ninth? Pardon me? Oh, there's one more slide? Okay. Hold on, I missed a slide. Let's see how I get there. There you go. And the district-wide referendum again is on December fifteenth. There's information on that slide about how to request an absentee ballot. And we hope our community comes out and votes. Thank you, everyone.